To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McHugh. Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante. She's absent. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin. She's out too. Four present, three absent. Just announced there was a quorum.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Under the first item on the agenda, Special Order of Business for Spotlight on Excellence, the Lowell Teacher Academy. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Last year, we were -- Lowell was fortunate enough to secure a three-year, $1.6 million grant to launch a comprehensive teacher induction program. We got the grant from a private foundation, Strategic Grant Partners, and tonight is an opportunity to share with the committee some information about that effort. It is now -- we're more than halfway through the first year of coursework and preparation of mentors and new teachers. And I'd like to introduce the Director of the Teacher Academy, Mary Sterling.
Good evening. I'm Mary Sterling, Director of the Lowell Teacher Academy, and it's been a privilege to have joined the Lowell school system in July and to begin the work with the new teachers and the mentors who have been working hard this year. Tonight, we have a video for you that we've made recently that shows the different dimensions of the Lowell Teacher Academy for your information. And now, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Kathleen O'Connor, Coordinator of the Lowell Teacher Academy.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. And I'd like to add to Mary our thanks to the mayor, to the city council, and to the school committee for providing this opportunity to highlight the Lowell New Teacher Academy. In addition to the video that you'll be seeing, you have received a one-page handout with a capsule view of the academy. And along with the video and the handout, we will welcome questions at the end of the video. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to work at a place where I have endless possibilities, and I felt like working in a larger school system. There's definitely more of that here.
This is the type of teacher we are looking for, eager to make a difference and willing to accept the challenge. In Lowell, Massachusetts, we recognize the challenging aspects of urban teaching, and so we have a comprehensive induction program for teachers new to our city, the Lowell Teacher Academy. It's a three-year program that works with you and for you because Lowell cares about your success as a teacher and the success of your students. In the next few minutes, you'll see how the Teacher Academy helps you integrate your skills into our environment while giving you the highest level of confidence in your teaching approach. Let's take a closer look. In late August, your work here begins with an orientation to our school system and the city of Lowell. It is also the start of a year-long course that introduces teachers to our culturally diverse student population and to the essential aspects of urban teaching in Lowell. At this time, you also meet your mentor, the experienced teacher who will work with you one-on-one throughout your first year. You will learn specifics about our instructional goals, and perhaps most importantly, you will begin your planning for the opening days of school.
I think the instructors and the people that were involved in orientation were people who are just ready for the next big thing. They're all excited about trying something new. So, for me, that was something I really liked.
What I remember about orientation was feeling incredibly welcomed. I met a lot of people, other teachers, administrators that were there, and everyone was just so positive about the academy and about working in Lowell. It made me very enthusiastic about starting my first day here.
Your mentor is an experienced teacher who will stay with you through your first year as your in-school guide. Through formal and informal discussions, you will talk over curriculum materials and issues that arise in your classroom. Three times a year, you will co-plan a lesson with your mentor, teach the lesson, and discuss it afterwards. The one-on-one work with your mentor is at the core of your first-year efforts as a teacher in Lowell.
She doesn't have to be nervous if I'm in the classroom with her because I'm not evaluating her, and in no way would I want to evaluate her. I basically let her come to me and ask me the questions, and then we work it out together.
In our formal weekly meetings, those are really helpful as well because if she's observed me, or again, if I have any questions that might take a little bit longer, she's always there, ready with some ideas or strategies that can help me.
Your mentor will also lead a monthly study group. Here, you will meet other teachers like yourself with whom you can share common challenges and issues. The group will focus on meeting the needs of urban students. You will share effective teaching strategies and become accustomed to the culture and expectations in your school.
So, she gave me some advice on what to have them do as soon as they get in, and I noticed that when I applied that, I was able to get through my lesson plans more and work through the curriculum more.
The other technique that we've learned a lot about here at the Butler, and we're hoping that it'll go school-wide, is the effective effort strategies, just getting the kids motivated that if their effort is there, that they can do well.
Your school will be invested in supporting your success as a teacher. Teacher support teams are school-specific groups led by your principal. This team strives to ensure that the school is doing everything it can to support new teachers. Members of the group address questions like, "Are resources available?" and "How can we facilitate progress?" This team will discuss your specific needs and will plan to support you as a new teacher. That way, there is a common ground for all aspects of the work you do.
The Riley School has been a great experience, especially for a first-year teacher. There's so much support, and everybody is so welcoming. Between, you know, my third-grade team, the ELL team, I have lots of support from my mentor and also from head administration. My principal, Linda McLaughlin, and Robbie Keefe have made me feel so comfortable.
The academy's Course for New Teachers provides you with three graduate-level credits. The coursework builds on your training as it focuses on the best practices for teaching urban students. While adding to your knowledge, we help you advance your career. Our comprehensive induction program is aligned with the Massachusetts Department of Education requirements so that you can effectively move forward in the licensing process, no matter where you are now. In the end, your academy work will increase your teaching skills while enhancing your licensure and career goals.
I've watched them come in really nervous with lots of different things to do and a little bit overwhelming, and watched them turn into really confident teachers that aren't afraid to be in the classroom, and they're really comfortable in what they're doing and teaching the kids and strategies and those kind of things.
She's very enthusiastic. She seems to have gained a little more confidence, and she's passed that confidence on to her students. I noticed around the holidays, we had a little holiday celebration, and she had her students up front of the whole student body singing, and they were just beaming.
The Lowell Teacher Academy, a comprehensive induction program for teachers who are new to Lowell. Each component of this system-wide approach is designed to work with you and work for Becoming a teacher in the Lowell Public Schools is a career choice you should make. Come to Lowell and join a school system that is committed to working with a diverse student population by supporting the professional growth of teachers like you.
I've become more confident, and I think that's your first year. As a teacher, you yourself building your confidence helps to build the confidence of your students, which is so important. Each week, we learn something different to add to our bag of tricks with behavior management, teaching style, curriculum development. So, it is an added boost. It's kind of like taking your vitamin C of teaching skills.
As I said in the beginning, this is designed to recruit more teachers to come to Lowell. And so, when you heard the narration on the video saying "your principal and you," it's all about drawing those new teachers here. Susan Duggan is doing a lot of recruitment already, and we are too, and we hope to bring lots more capable and enthusiastic teachers to Lowell. We wonder if you have any questions, having seen the video or the sheet before you that we could answer this evening.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a couple of questions. First is, how many mentors do we have right now? And are we mentoring only first-time teachers or any teacher who's new to the city, even if they've got experience under their belt?
Yep, that is two questions. The first is, we have about 60 mentors altogether, mentoring teachers from pre-K through grade 12, all the way through. And indeed, in the academy, there are teachers who have had teaching experience, but they're new to Lowell. And so, our interest is to try to give them the guidelines and the support so that they can teach Lowell students to their very best ability.
Just to address your second question, the mentors are working with the first-year teachers, and in the second and third year, that role will be taken over by the content coaches, instructional specialists and content coaches, and literacy coaches.
So, is it every first-year teacher that participates?
Yes.
And how many of those were there this year? Do you know?
We have about 100.
About 100.
First-year teachers, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Leary?
Just two quick questions to the superintendent, and one of them you probably can't answer directly at this point. I know you said it was a $3 million-plus grant we received, 1.6 million. Is there an allocation? How is that actually being spent? And I guess you can't answer that question right now, but I'd like to get some information exactly. Where are the dollars being spent? A second question is, how long is this grant in place? Is it a year-to-year grant? Will we be able to get this successfully again next year? Because it seems like a very -- the action plan we just looked at on the presentation was excellent. It looks like something that will have, you know, positive results.
If I could just comment a couple of things. The grant we secured is a three-year grant, so this is year one of a three-year grant. The commitment that we made last year when I asked the committee to accept the grant is we've made a commitment to sustain the program past the funding. So, we've been developing a plan for how to absorb, ultimately absorb, the costs, what the program and what the grant pays for, all the startup costs associated with developing a curriculum, with forging the relationships with Pittsburgh State, which is the institution that we're collaborating with to grant graduate credit, provides for the administration of the program, pays -- so pays for the courses to be taught and pays for the mentors, as well as some of the other sort of more incidental costs of the program. The mentors, all -- which was not highlighted in the video because the video was aimed at teachers as part of our recruiting. We used this video. We were showing it, continuous loop, at the Merrimack Valley Recruiting Fair. So, we didn't emphasize the mentor role in that, but the mentors this year have also taken a three-credit graduate course in mentoring designed by our staff, led by Mary Sterling and Kathleen O'Connor, so that they learn the skills of mentoring, and they'll continue with coursework in years two and three, as will the teachers. So, this is the most comprehensive plan for teacher induction in the Commonwealth, and this is the model that is being looked at statewide to the program that needs to be in place in every district. So, we're ahead of what's being mandated. So, every district is required to have an induction program. Those requirements are getting more and more rigorous. We're now able to be ahead of the curve on it and get this boost of funding to get us to a position where we will be in the forefront and complying with increasingly rigorous state expectations for a quality induction program. I think you know that this period from 2005 to 2010 will be a period in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that's almost unprecedented since the 1960s in terms of having to recruit into the profession an incredibly large number of teachers to not just Lowell, but across the New England, and as an entire generation retires. And so, the having an induction program in place now is absolutely essential to build the next generation of great teachers and great teaching for our kids.
No, and I thank you, and I'm glad you highlighted that we're going to be having an enormous turnover in educators in the next five, well, four to six years, and that we're on the cutting edge is a good thing to hear, and I agree, it adds a lot of value. And you gave me more information regarding the financials that I thought you'd be able to right now, but I thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Leahy?
I might as well say something, too. I just want to say that was an excellent video, and thank you to Mary and Kathleen for coming down. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 1 meeting. Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent, nothing this week. Next item is memorials. We have a group of memorials, first by the committee as a whole, for Galia Estvez, Shaughnessy School first grader who passed away last week, and by Regina Fattacante, memorials for Rosa Augusta DiMello, great-grandmother of Ann Borba, clerk at Central Administration; for Kevin Jeffroy, son-in-law of Mary Cannon, a retired payroll supervisor; and Farida Corcoran, retired Lowell High School teacher and mother-in-law to Maria Corcoran, Maury School paraprofessional; and Madeline Corcoran, Butler School teacher. If we could rise in a moment of silence for these people. Okay. Thank you. There are no items, I believe, under unfinished business or public participation, which brings us to the motions. First motion is joint motion by Mr. Leahy and Mr. McHugh, motion that the superintendent report on how much a program run by community teamwork would cost if it were needed at the Moody School for the upcoming year, seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself. I just wanted to shed some light on this for other committee members and for anybody interested at the Moody School that may be affected if this takes place. So, very simply, that's all I needed out of that motion. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor. I was wondering if we could amend this motion a little bit with the respect of my colleague here to include looking at other providers, because I know the YMCA has a program that is on a sliding-scale basis, and I'd like to look at what options are out there for before-school programs, and I wouldn't want to just be limited in CTI, so I'd like to amend it to include other possible providers.
Okay. Any objection to the amendment?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? So, the motion as amended. All in favor say aye. Any approve? The motion is adopted. Next motion is by Ms. Dougherty, motion to request the superintendent provide a report updating the committee on professional development efforts at the elementary, middle, and high school levels over the last two years. The report should include the focus of those efforts, their associated cost, the time required both during and after school, and the impact of those efforts on curriculum and teaching throughout the district, seconded by Mr. Leary. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, I think the motion really speaks for itself. We've looked very closely at improving quality of instruction in the classroom, and I think it is a priority for the district. At the same time as we look at our budget needs for next year, I think we need to really take a look at what are the results of our professional development efforts? What can we look at in terms of the impact on the quality of instruction in the classroom? And that's really the intent of this motion, is to have us, as a committee, get a chance to really look at kind of an overview of what we've been doing on professional development in the last two years in terms of focus, time involved, and the results of those efforts. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Under reports of the superintendent, we have several matters. First, for crisis planning, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martin. I wanted to update the committee on our crisis planning and the procedures that are in place. As I think committee members know, we have a district-wide crisis planning procedure, and each school has a specific procedure tailored to the school that's laid out to how to handle a range of crises. Last week was a particularly challenging and difficult crisis, and I would just like to share with the committee something I wrote this staff because I think it captures, gives you a feel for how the crisis plan with the city, within the school department, and at the school level works. Tragedy struck this week. Galia Estvez went home ill from her first-grade class at the Shaughnessy School on Monday and died Monday night from bacterial meningitis. We are all reeling, too young, too fast, too scary, too random, too hard. Our hearts go out to her family first. The loss is unfathomable. Our hearts go out, too, to her teachers and classmates. The Shaughnessy community has faced death too often in recent years. Assistant Principal Roberta McBride, student Cassie Zuzumis, literacy specialist Kathy Gleason, and now, Galia. While it is not something in which they have ever wished to develop expertise, Principal Linda Lee, her assistant Gail Cahill, and the staff of the Shaughnessy are skillful in taking care of the children and each other in the face of death. Care, compassion, and skill were in evidence all week. They did a wonderful job of maintaining the familiar structures, careful listening, and gentle reassurance that the children needed. They provided the clear information that worried parents wanted, and they offered the solace and support their colleagues sought. Shaughnessy School's social worker Marilyn McCarthy, Nurse Pam Johnson, and Secretary Ann Weber played especially critical roles at the school, as did Galia's kindergarten and first-grade teachers, Shannon Green and Cindy Buckley. I was proud, too, of the support that district staff provided. Jean Franco maintained close contact with Galia's mother, who must have found safety in knowing that she could use her native language of Spanish in speaking with Jean. My secretary June Cormier expertly directed the surge of phone calls from parents, media, and staff. Sue Smith, Sue Duggan, Phil Curtin, Tem Chia, and Fred McCosker were with Jean onsite at the Shaughnessy to help out in big and little ways. The office staff at the Butler dropped everything to print the letters that were sent home with children. Help came from other schools as well. Social workers Patty Corenti, Sue Hriga, Liz Higgins arrived to help. Lisa Golden, head of the school health unit in the city's Health Department, was especially helpful, taking charge of the complicated public health issues and bringing additional nurses with her, Linda Gallagher, Lori Pender, and Mary Zame. Frank Singleton, the city health director, ably handled the difficult task of keeping the press informed on medical issues. Assistant city manager TJ McCarthy, transportation coordinator John Decoto, and assistant superintendent Jay Lang assisted throughout with logistics and security issues. What a team effort. This is not -- we never want to deal with crises. We don't want to deal with tragedies, but when they do happen, I want to assure the committee that our staff is well-prepared and the city is well-prepared to step up and provide all the kinds of support that a city health department, that the city manager's office, that the police need to provide in these kinds of situations. So, I wanted to share that with the committee. And I also had not expected to include this in this evening's report, but I did want to let the committee know formally that a very unfortunate incident occurred today at the Lincoln School where, again, our crisis planning procedures have been tested. One of our first graders choked at lunch. Teachers on duty and our nurses responded immediately and called for emergency personnel. The youngster was taken to the local hospital and has been sent to Boston for further medical treatment where he now is. At this time, we do not have information on his condition. We will obviously keep the committee members and the community informed as we learn anything. Other first graders were in the cafeteria during the first few minutes that the student was being treated. We made sure that extra staff came to classrooms to assist, and then we wrote a letter home to parents in which we gave them this information and also explained that a situation like this can be very difficult for young children to understand. And we explained that if your child seems to want to talk about what he or she has heard or seen, to please know that it's natural for children to ask questions and talk about what happened. We had social workers at the school this afternoon. We spoke -- the principal spoke to all of the children. We paid particular attention to the youngsters that were in the immediate vicinity of the youngster when he started to choke. And if children are particularly upset, we've alerted parents that please let us know in the school so that we can pay particular attention to them tomorrow. We will make sure that there are additional staff available at the school tomorrow, and we will keep everyone informed. Of course, our thoughts and prayers are with the youngster and his family. Again, not something that we ever choose to deal with, but again, I want to assure the committee that we are prepared in every way that we can think of to do what's right by kids during this and also what's right by staff and families. So, the principal Sandy Dunning had opportunity to speak to the parents, and so has been in touch with the parents, and I believe that absolutely everything that could be done at the school site was done, and I know that, again, the paramedics and the police were incredibly helpful, and the health department as well this afternoon. So, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I wanted to personally thank the folks that were involved in the incident last week involving meningitis, particularly people in your staff, I know, who are here tonight. Frank Singleton and Lisa Golden and others at the health department and people in the city manager's office. Really was a quite impressive effort put forth, both public-information-wise and public-health-wise, to make sure that nobody else was at risk in the system. So, I want to personally thank all of you for your involvement here. I think it speaks very well of the city. Certainly a very unfortunate incident, and it's at least helpful to know that we have measures in place to prevent the spread of both disease and panic in these types of situations. So, thank you all, and hopefully we'll have more positive news to report on the incident from today. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? On the next item, then, on -- okay, we'll accept that report as a report of progress, place on file. Motion to do so by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion's approved. Next report is from the Department of Education Panel Review on the Merklin School. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Since our last meeting, the Department of Education has released its reports on the 26 schools that had been selected on the basis of low MCAS scores for panel reviews that would determine if they would be identified as underperforming schools and face a series of both sanctions, consequences, as well as support under state and federal guidelines. These panels at each of these 26 schools addresses two key questions. guidelines. These panels at each of these 26 schools addresses two key questions. The first is the school implementing a sound plan for improvement, and second, do the conditions appear to be in place for the successful implementation of that improvement plan? Of the 26 schools that panels visited this year, the department declared that 23 of those schools to be underperforming statewide. We had one school visited this year, and it was the Merklin Elementary School. In the case of the Merklin and two other schools, the Department of Education decided to defer any decision pending analysis of the fall 2000, the spring 2006 MCAS results, which will come out in the fall. Earning a deferral, which three of the schools out of the 26 earned, is as close as any school can come to passing the panel review. So no one could completely pass. It used to be that you could pass, but this year the rules changed, and a school either was declared underperforming or it was given a deferral. So Merklin was one of only three schools that earned a deferral. This is good news for Lowell, because the findings are a tribute to the staff's hard work and the quality of instruction that the review panel found during its two-day visit in December, when they visited classrooms, observed instruction, interviewed teachers, interviewed administrators. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the findings in the report. One finding was that the administration and faculty are implementing a sound plan for improvement, have demonstrated an ongoing willingness to evaluate and revise the plan as needed, and report an increase in teachers' focus on data analysis and instructional improvement. A second comment, the conditions at the Merklin appear to be in place for the successful implementation of the plan. The principal, who is Rick Rogers, is a good organizational leader and has a clear vision for improvement that is supported by the district and school personnel. Third, the commitment of the Merklin faculty is evidenced in their implementation efforts and in their belief in the school's improvement efforts. And then in a tribute, I think, to Deputy Superintendent Rorak and others in the central office, district leadership is well-informed of the school's needs and provides resources to support implementation of the plan. You have the full report. There are other comments in it that I think are very laudatory of what the panel saw in terms of the quality of effort and the quality of instruction, but I'd welcome answering any questions from the committee.
Okay. Any questions, members of the committee? I do have one question, Madam Superintendent. The 26 schools that were reviewed, were those all schools that had been previously determined to be underperforming?
No, none of them had been reviewed before, so they, like the Merklin, had never had a Department of Education visit. They were 26 schools. The Department of Ed had already come to review approximately 50 schools or more in the state over the last five years, and declared a number of those underperforming. This year was the largest single number in a year. They identified 26 new schools that they wanted to look at because of low MCAS scores. Twenty-three of the, one of them was in Lowell, 25 elsewhere in the state. 23 of the 26 were found to be underperforming, and the Merklin got the deferral.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion's adopted. Next item is a report concerning decrease in federal education funding for FY07. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I just wanted to alert the committee here with a letter from the Department of Education dated March 9th that alerted us to the impact of decisions in Washington about funding for the Title I, which is the largest grant that the district or any city gets, is the Title I grant. Our grant is in the vicinity of $10 million. It's a grant that we've gotten for many, many years. We use it for, to support mathematics and literacy instruction for students. There's a portion of it that's required to be spent on professional development. Our literacy coaches, many of them are paid through this grant, as well as positions at the school sites. This is a grant that the Congress, this was the major grant that was to have been increased under No Child Left Behind. So when No Child Left Behind was passed and went into effect in 2001, the promise was significant increases in Title I funding. Those increases have not been forthcoming, and Massachusetts has faced the double whammy, because in 2000 there was a decision to count the census differently. And committee members may be aware of this. Until the 2000 census, there was agreement among statisticians that the final census count done for every city and town and every state would be based on a mathematical projection, because census takers know that you can't reach every family when you're sampling. And so there were very sophisticated sampling statistics that were used to correct for the unreported people. That particularly affects a community like Lowell, where there are a number of families for historical reasons, because of where the countries they came from, or a variety of reasons, work hard to avoid being counted in a census. After the 2000 census, there was much debate in Congress, and ultimately, there was a majority vote to change the way the census is counted and eliminate those statistical projections. So that has hurt places like Massachusetts, California, and some other states, particularly with high immigrant populations. Massachusetts is also a state that its population has not grown during that time. So it's the sort of the triple whammy of our population has not grown during that time, you know, no longer can count in a projection uncounted folks, and the allocation has been, has grown only slightly from Congress in those five years. It means that our Title I grant in Lowell will continue to be cut. So it will be cut for the third consecutive year, and we anticipate losing more than $1 million of the grant. So we're expecting to lose one out of every $10 of the Title I grant. We're studying now what those impacts might be, and those will be, we'll be bringing that information to you as part of the budget process. It's a program that we've had to make cuts over the last several years that have been deep cuts, and we will have, we will have no choice but to make some additional cuts in the grant funding, and we'll discuss that more during the budget process. But we wanted to give you an early alert of this bad news for the school department.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. I guess if I understand this letter correctly, we're looking at a 10% cut statewide in Title I funding from the feds. And I have to add on to what the superintendent said about, our population has been decreasing in the state of Massachusetts, except for our immigrant population, which if the census data is now being configured in a different way, we won't get credit for those immigrants if they're not being counted. My question, then, is if statewide the cut is 10%, does that mean that across the board districts will receive a 10% cut, or will the state look at needs based on different communities, and perhaps we won't be looking at a 10% cut, which would be awful?
The state will not do this as a cross-the-board 10% cut in every community. They are looking at need. They're looking at the extent of poverty in the community. At the same time, the biggest grants go to the largest school systems. Our best information at this point is for us to anticipate a 10% reduction. That's the information that we have at this moment. The staff at the Department of Education is, you know, also looking at the numbers, trying to figure out what they can do, but that's their best estimate for planning at this point that they have given us.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. When we, I think this question came up last year. Can we, are the rules going to change for staff development for the, I can't think of the word right now, but can we take some of the money from?
Professional development?
Professional development and use it, you know, if we, if it comes down to a reading teacher in a school, you know?
The requirements are very rigid for professional development. It's an absolute requirement that we spend a specific minimum percentage of the grant, and if we fail to do that, we lose that amount of funding. It becomes an audit exception, and we lose that funding for the following year.
They aren't even looking at that, where they're cutting our budget and?
No, and when, this is particularly now tied into adequate yearly progress in No Child Left Behind, so the requirement becomes even stronger for districts that have schools that have not made adequate yearly progress. So the requirement is even stronger for communities like Lowell, under the No Child Left Behind regulations.
And just one other quick thing. Does professional development, does that include some of the, I can't think tonight, some of the, when the, some of the teachers go on these conference trips, is that, that's paid out of professional development also, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, most, almost all of the, most of the conferences that we bring forward to you to approve, the vast majority are paid for through different grant funds. In some cases, Title I; in other cases, other grants.
Because my thinking would be that why does, I mean, I know it's important, but it may not be important for someone to go to the same conference every year, where we could save some money on that, and?
We, I agree with you, and we look very carefully. We've really been scrutinizing the professional development, the conference requests, and trying to make sure they're ones that we really are going to get benefit, significant benefit, out of, and we've, so that, so that there are, there's nothing sort of just habit anymore to those. We're really trying to scrutinize each one and make sure that we're going to really get benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Madam Superintendent, just quickly, a couple of questions. First question, what timeframe do you guess the state will allow you, allow, provide for us the timeframe? Well, you back up. When will the state let us know what our actual take is on the Title I grants? When are you going to get this information?
The state is probably going to be, they are unable to do this until June, is the information that we have, to give us a definitive number.
Will we get any estimates prior to that?
Yes, so the current estimate is planned for a 10% cut, and if there's any change between now and June, they'll give us their best advice. We have a very, you know, they're frustrated themselves by not being, you know, not being able to give us a good estimate. So, and we're in very close contact with the Department of Education, but their direction to us at this point is plan on a 10%.
So the bottom, the worst-case scenario is a 10%. It can get?
We hope it's the worst-case scenario. It hasn't always been. There have been times when we've been given the best estimate at this time of year, and it's wound, it has wound up being worse in June. But we know that the state doesn't want to do that, so that, I'm very hopeful that this is worst-case scenario.
Okay, for my own edification, just to expand on what Committeeman Leahy was saying, is there flexibility in terms of how this money is spent, or is it spent in specific categories? He was touching based on, you know, professional development. Can we, is there other areas where there will be flexibility?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And so what we'll, what we will be doing over the next six weeks or so is really looking at the options within, within the grant and with existing staffing to come up with what would, what would be the, you know, the least adverse impact of those cuts.
Okay. What I'd like to do at this point, too, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, please correct me, and I'm not sure what committee to make a motion to send it to, but I would initially guess finance because of dollars and cents, but I would make a motion, and if it's a better committee, please let me know. I'm making a motion to refer this matter to the finance committee for further review with our administrative folks to come up with some decisions on how we're going to deal with this. I mean, we get more and more mandates and less and less funding. It is what it is, I guess. So I make a motion to refer it to the finance committee.
Okay. So moved by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion is adopted.
Can I ask, I have one other question.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. On a somewhat related to this, do we still have a professional grant writer's position for, is that something maybe we need to look back?
We don't, we don't have one. We don't, we haven't had, I don't, did we have one before I got here?
Maybe we've never had one.
No, we've never had one.
Is that something maybe that might pay off for us, that, should we be looking into that? I mean, I hear that about across the state, that, you know, so-and-so's district, they have a professional grant writer, and that person, you know, their sole job is just to bring money into the district, so?
Right. They, I think we've, we need to do some thinking about the cost-benefit of that. I know that the police department has been very successful with a grant writer. I'm working with the grant writer right now on a major police department-initiated grant related to gang prevention, and that will have, if we're successful in it, we'll have some ways to get some additional funds for school programs that are intervention programs. I think we can take a look at that, and I'd welcome the opportunity to talk about that with the finance subcommittee as well.
Because maybe we could find somebody who's retiring that might want to do that on the side and be a good job for them. Thank you.
Okay, next item, you're not retiring, are you? Okay, next item is a report on the First Annual Lowell Public Schools Community Festival. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I'm very excited that the parent information center under Dr. Palat Chia and the parent liaisons at our schools have initiated a first-ever event, a community festival, public school community festival, an opportunity for interested residents, parents, teachers, other staff, and students to come together on March 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school to celebrate accomplishments of youngsters in the schools and to have a fun evening that will introduce them to a lot of what goes on in the schools. There'll be, there'll be entertainment provided by students, variety of arts, displays, dance, music. There'll be scavenger hunt, displays about all of our schools, displays about community resources that support youth in the city, some read-alouds for young children, some raffles, and we hope to have a really large turnout of students and their families and members of our staff and the community to celebrate, celebrate schoolchildren, celebrate our schools. We're providing transportation from schools for families and their children in order to make it really simple for families to get from their schools to downtown and to the high school. We're going to run the events in the Lowell High School cafeteria, as well as the auditorium at this, the McDonough, the old city magnet now McDonough freshman building. So people also have an opportunity to see the facilities at the high school in case they haven't seen them before, and I think it's, it has great promise of a wonderful event for the city, for the schools, and I applaud the parent liaisons and Dr. Chia for launching this idea and the support that the schools and the students are giving to it. So welcome any questions about it.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great idea. I'm looking forward to attending with my own family. And my question, I guess, is have we done outreach to business leaders and to our, let's say, the city council? Have they got an invitations? I know I've read about it in the paper, but I'm thinking especially the group with the Lowell Plan on that study committee, to just kind of drop a personal note to them. This is a great opportunity for them to come over at the high school when we have this community event happening, especially the part about highlighting student work and performances. I think it'd be great to see some business leaders and other members of the community there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next report of the superintendent is on home education.
There's one request for home education of a child. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Martin. Four yeas, three absent, approved.
Okay. Next item is Personnel Report.
Yes, you have the Personnel Report for March 15th and I just call your attention to six additional retirements of veteran teachers. Five of the six have well over 30 years of, of service to the Lowell Public Schools.
Motion to accept the report by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. And the final report is on the list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is, each, each month you get a list of all of those, all of those professionals who are certified and eligible for employment in the Lowell Public Schools. And it is from this list that all of the hiring is done.
Motion to approve the report by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Any items under new business? There being none, we have, let's see, one, two, three. Seven requests for conference and conventions for various purposes. Funding is all indicated. Some of them actually are at no cost to the system.
Moved to?
Moved to, consider them all together and to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Mr. McHugh. Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Four yeas, three absent, approved.
Okay. Anyone have anything else to come before the meeting? There being none, we entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.